Seven AM to nine AM?
Yeah.
Is he rent? Where did he go? Sorry, didn't push in there. Okay, you guys are all ready? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call this study session to order. Thank you and welcome everyone for being here this evening. We're going to go ahead and start with the agenda item one and that's going to be by our community service director Danny Gallegos.
Good evening Mayor Fitzgivens, members of the council. I'd like to go through my presentation on the Ed Hooper beautification project. We did receive some CIP funds to do that. We have some different ideas to present tonight to have some discussions on that. We have taken this to the community services advisory board so we do have some input from them, but I'll share that at the end to not influence you on some of your ideas on what your thoughts are on some of these different things. Just to give you a little context on some things going on there now and some current amenities and some upcoming projects. Now, we are just talking about the entrance type area and the purple area and the red area and some of the trail projects. As you can see in the top right-hand corner, we do have the dog park and we have the playground up there. We will be adding some things to the dog park with this project and some of the park neighborhood funds as well to beautify that area, but we're really gonna be talking about the purple area and that red area. The parking area is another that will include some different funding, so these current amenities will not utilize those same funds. Some other upcoming amenities are BMX, just to let you know, I have tried reaching out to them recently but have not heard back, so I'm not sure where we're on that. So that will be another discussion to talk about the mound out there, what we do with that. Even if they come in the future, we may have to discuss removing that for right now. At this point, it's not suitable for events, so that's a conversation we'll have to have if I don't hear back from them soon. The trail, which I'll show you those maps here in a second, that's another amenity that we are working on right now. We did have some design issues, that's why it didn't come before council, but we've resolved those design issues, so we'll be coming forward again with that. But it will include some riprap and some lights and landscaping when that project gets complete. Those will probably come in last and the trail will come in before those two items, based on what direction we get from today's presentation. I threw in the new veterans memorial, if you haven't been out there, to give you a little context too. It's got a lot going on, so that's something to consider when we talk about that purple area here in a moment of what we decide to put in there. Will it complement it? Will it be another destination place? Those are all things to discuss. These are where the trails are gonna be going. You can see the north area that will start on the turnoff and go north all the way to the dog park and the south end will go all along through the trees and then alongside the fire station. You can see in this photo, the fire station's not there. It does exist right now though. So it's really the red area, which is the entrance of what we're gonna discuss today and along with the fence along Penal from rodeo to the northeast corner of the dog park and then the purple area, which is a blank area as you know, and it's 2.32 acres, just to let you know, to give you a little context on how big that is. But those are gonna be our focus areas for today. And then, of course, the black lines, you can see, we'd like to add some sidewalks for people to be able to walk through on what is in that particular area. It'll be easier for people to park, go to the ball fields, or decide just to go into those particular areas to access the trail, access the purple area for easy maneuvering around the park, especially at that end. So you can see, this is the entrance here right now, so we're gonna have to improve the asphalt as well. We do have some funds that we're gonna be doing some chip sealing and some different things to make sure that that gets taken care of as well. So these are some of the ideas that have been brought forward for the entrance area and the new fence would go along the entire way from rodeo all the way to the dog park is one of the ideas. A lot of people talk about the gabions, you've noticed, the caged rocks, some people call them, that could be part of that fencing. The only issue with that being part of the entire fence line is the cost. The cost is pretty high, so I think the better idea was to utilize gabions possibly or other columns. The benefit of gabions is they don't seem to get as much graffiti or vandalism on them. They're easier to maintain for that reason. You can always replace a rock. Of course, we talked about adding landscaping and lights along the trail. The other idea is to put an archway at the entrance, so as you come into the park, it could have a sign on top of it saying Ed Hooper Park entrance or City of Casa Grande, it could be a variety of things. Or it could be pillars and columns or signs on both sides with no arch. So you see some parks you go into and you have a beautiful sign with a nice structure with lights, landscaping that you would enter on both sides. So that's another idea that we have. We could put the gabions along with the signage, that would be the bigger expense, but if you just put a basic fence like you see here along the rest of Penal Avenue, it would be a lot more cost-effective. We don't have to put a fence at all, but there is a fence right there. We would wanna protect that and have that separation between actually state land and the city land where the trail and landscaping is gonna be. Right now, as you notice, we have, I call it barbed wire, but they always correct me. It's not barbed Danny, but it looks that way to me. But it's actually a fence that does need to come down because it's broken in different spots, so if we replaced it with something aesthetically pleasing like this, it would be a lot more cost-effective. That's just some of the ideas. So it would be with an arch or without an arch. These are some of the ideas that we've pulled from different cities. We have some zoos that have full arches on here. We have one at the bottom that actually happens to be a community, and we're not saying we'd have a gate to go in there, but these are some of the column ideas that could be at the entrance. Those could be gabions as well, those columns. And at the upper right corner, you can see where that's a fairly new park, a regional park that Penal County has, it's called Peralta Regional Park, and that's a fairly new structure that's been erected that seems to be pretty popular around the state because it is easy to maintain, it has, it looks nice. So that's another idea that could be on both sides. So I didn't know if you had any, wanted to wait to discuss this as I move on to the other area, but I just wanted to get your thoughts on, what your thoughts are on these two options.
Thoughts so far? Well Anthony's ready. Go ahead Anthony.
I really love the turtleback zoo arch, and I know you said that it'd probably be more, it's gonna cost us more if we do the rock fencing. I like that too with the same wire that's on that turtle rock, our turtleback zoo in line with those.
The fences.
And so it'd match exactly with that right there, but that's Anthony's. I know it's gonna cost us a little bit more for that fencing, but, because I just believe, can I say another thing too? Also on the signage, I know here it's really, I guess at a light up at nighttime, I see the lights at the very top. Well, right down the street at the new firehouse, that's a digital clock and it lights up and it looks really nice to me.
Really nice.
So I'm kinda caught up between that lighting up there to match something similar to what's there in the corner there, what is that, rodeo road?
Right, right there in the corner.
Yeah, to match that, because I just think coming into town, it's gonna stand out. It's gonna look nice, you know, and hopefully down the road, there's some other things we would like to do, of course, there, and so we really wanna make that look really, really nice.
And the cost, I don't think will be that much more than what you see there with the Peralta Regional Park. I think it's more if we wanna continue in the extending of the fence, that would be the cost. So I think it would be similar in cost if we just did the arch. With some basic columns of whatever material we wanna use, and then the fence can go out a little bit, a little bit towards the entrance and then just revert to a simpler fence.
Simple fence, yeah.
So what would that look like?
Matt, the reason you hand?
Yep. So I really like the gabion boxes, but in the interest of cost, I think they make great entryway, you know, right there at the entrance and then maybe at the end of the fences or something to kinda give it a.
Some points in somewhere else.
You know, a few points. The one thing about the fence is you have it there and I don't know specifically what is it, is it like vinyl or wood? It's not gonna be wood.
Yeah, we probably wouldn't be wood, it would be more of a metal fence or something like that that would last a little bit longer.
Yep, and that's great. And personally, I'd just like to see it like not white.
Yeah.
Like not bright white, you know.
Part of the idea was to give it a ranch.
And then with the gabion boxes, we had some good luck before when we built the public safety building, police fire on Val Vista, and we got the local rocks from the mine area, so it kinda ties everything in together.
Okay, have some similar patterns.
Because they got copper and enema and stuff, that's pretty nice, so.
And the copper too, kind of, if you go down Penal towards just south of Cottonwood, you know that you have some of the copper there as well as part of that trail entrance with the copper, okay?
Any other comments? Oh Sean, sure.
Yeah, I had just, one of my questions Matt kinda covered was what material are you gonna make the fence out of because we wanna make sure it's easily replaceable because there's car wrecks out there and stuff and if something happened, someone blew through that fence, we might make sure it's easily to find and easily replaceable. And then the arch, is there, there shouldn't need to be a height restriction on that, am I correct? Because if semis and different things need to come in, there's other access.
There is other access, we have discussed that. If we did have a restriction, we would have to send them down rodeo. Our hopes are that we make it tall enough that, you know, a large vehicle can get through just, for future planning, for things that might have to get in there, let's say we do, when we develop that area on the west side that we can have access both from rodeo and there is the plan. So that's gonna depend on the design and what we do if we decide on an arch, how high should we go? And my original thought is we should go as high as we possibly can just to get larger trucks in there if we can, so.
Perfect.
Plus, it would look really nice if we had something super big.
Oh yeah.
People can see from further away that, hey, we're at Ed Hooper now at City of Casa Grande, so.
Any other comments on this?
I'll just add in, yeah, the arch is the way to go in my opinion. Arch with the gabions.
So, I, well first of all, I'm so happy we're doing this. I mean, literally, we, it's definitely needed and especially an entrance to this park and, you know, with the fire station right there, it's gonna be a great addition. So super excited, I'm glad to see that you're getting the community service advisory board involved, so I would really like to see what their opinion is. For me, I like the idea of the arch, but honestly, I like that Peralta Regional Park one. I just think it's simple, classic, and just, I don't know, I just think for that, that could be good with lighting that lights up the sign, but an arch, I think if that's what, you know, the community service group thinks is the best thing to do too, I'm fine with an arch too, but again, making sure that we get the height, you know, right and making sure that you can see what the name of the park is clearly, you know, when you're driving in, because, you know, if we have the arch, is there going to be something that goes the other direction too to show what the name of the park is or is it just the entry? So, or at least the Peralta, if you're driving up, you can, to me, it seems like you can see it a little bit clearer of what the name of the park is than the arch. So I just think it's just gonna, you know, make sure that that, the way the writing is or whatever it is, has to be clear.
Well, the idea behind, if we didn't do an arch, to put them on both sides of the entrance way, so you can see it from either direction you're coming from would be, I think, the plan. So it's, so even if it's not an arch, that it's very clear that you are entering between two columns or two big signs that, hey, I'm at Ed Hooper, so.
And lighting and everything.
Inviting and it's beautiful and it's, whether you're entering an arch, you can clearly see that.
Yes.
Or it's something that on both sides that I'm entering a different place, so.
Well, good, no, great example, so thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the purple area, which I'm gonna provide a variety of different slides of themes, if you will, on what could be done with that space. It's 2.32 acres, which if you wanna, a little context, a football field with the end zones is about 1.32 acres, so a little bit more than two football fields that we have to work with. There will be a trail going through that whole eastern end of it, just to give you also a little context of what's going on there. This is what it looks like now, so take one last look. So these are art installations that if you put something in the middle with different trails or different things out, this could be an opportunity for people to come and guiding park users through the park, whether it's a passage with different art things or it could be something like in Chicago or Philadelphia where people actually could be a destination place for people is one option. Another option would be history and culture. This could be combined in the previous slide, also could be combined with other things, it doesn't have to be just this, but this could be a little bit closer to home, whether it's Arizona, whether it's something about the native people that were here before, or, you know, could be anything about water and different things going on in Casa Grande. So these are different options. These are smaller, so could be part of a park if we add other things to it. Here's a desert landscaping, I should've put turf on this as well. This could be an area, I believe this actually pictures in Scottsdale somewhere, where it actually has some turf as well as some landscaping with some shaded areas for people to be able to relax, to do different things. I believe they have art, statues or different history things on the walls there underneath the shade structures there. And then, of course, you could do something where it's, you have trails and things walking around so people can look at the different desert landscape, you can plant desert trees that are indigenous to here and understand a little bit more about our desert environment could be an option with some of those trails. Here's some sidewalks, does anybody know which one is ours? And where it is?
The middle one is by the wash.
Ah, you got it. So that's our middle one, that's our Rotary Park.
The Santa Cruz.
Yes. It's right over there, Rotary Park. I actually went and took this picture just last week, so just to get an idea of what it looks like, what the trail's gonna look like, but also what people can do once we put that trail and if we decide to do desert landscaping in that area, we could put different trails that connect to the sidewalks, so just giving you an idea of what that will look like. Here's some other Ramadas and pavilions. I believe the one on the left with the shade structures, the big shade structure, is in Arizona. It just is completely covered for people to sit with some small water features, they're more like fountains. It doesn't mean it has to be those water fountains, it could be something else. And then you have another shaded structure with swings. Obviously, this is a lake, we don't have a lake, but it could be a place for people to sit and do different things. And then a basic shade pavilion, which is, I say basic, but a lot of people need shade here in Arizona, so people can congregate, experience the desert landscaping in that space. Another option would be outdoor fitness equipment. This is, fitness courts are from San Francisco to Phoenix, I know Maricopa has one, they have art opportunities on the backside of them would be an option, or it could be, this is actually called a ninja course that you can see at the bottom left for people to do exercise type things. So these are a few of the options that we're presenting tonight. I will go to a little bit about what the advisory board discussion notes. We did talk about it for a good hour and a half, so I condensed it into a small area of what there's. Now, I'll be honest with you, there was some back and forth on what was most popular, but what it came down to is they did prefer the metal signs with landscaping and lights. They weren't completely opposed, some of them were opposed, but more often they wanted to, if we're gonna not do the arch, they wanted to have very large signs on each side so it's clear where we are. So they were okay if we didn't, if we had a very visible way to get in, similar to the Peralta Trail. The open space, they felt that because we're the sports complex, they preferred some grass areas like that one photo with some landscaping, so teams between games could go over and put up one of their own tents, relax, be able to throw the ball around a little bit. But then actually, what the most important thing in the longest discussion we had was to provide some shade structures. They felt that if we had some grass and people to relax, some of the youth that are actually participating in games, but then have some shade structures, that we can still do some art and have some options there and people can sit and relax and be able to go to the memorial as well as come over there and see other things that were going on in Casa Grande or what we wanted to decide. Obviously, we would get arts and cultural hopefully involved if we decided to go in that direction. I'll definitely communicate with them. But that's kind of where their ideas were after our long conversation on this very similar presentation. But part of that is discussion here as well and to answer any questions on what your thoughts are, and I can go back to any of these photos. Hopefully, you looked at this before and kinda had some ideas and some questions on some of these particular areas.
Danny, can you go back to the photo that had the grass, the grass area with some shade structure? Was it that? Yeah, that one? Because of course, we wanna try to minimize the number of grass.
And that's the part that I, that's.
Or try to reduce it to save water, so, but I see there's, you know, just small areas here with some desert landscaping around it, but, and the artificial turf, wouldn't hold up in something like this?
Artificial turf would hold up, it's not gonna get a lot of playing time. The only issue with artificial turf is the kind of how hot it is.
Yeah, it does get really hot.
It generates, I believe it's 162 degrees that it gets out in the middle of the summer is what it does. You still have to maintain it, you still have to vacuum it, you still have to maintain it, nowhere to the extent of grass, of course, but the grass is cooler. You know, if, even if grass was not decided on, there could be a place for people to have more shade structures and places where are more comfortable than just concrete benches, so if that's the direction we wanted to go.
Right, okay. But this is nice because it kinda has both in there, so it's not just one big, you know, field and, but I think shade is definitely important and so is seating, like some type of seating, benches or, you know, whatever, because I know that dog park doesn't have a whole lot of seating and there's, I mean, I guess there's a few benches throughout the park, but I think that's important if people are just waiting to go and play their game and, you know, finding a place to picnic or whatever in between games or something, that could be good.
Doesn't mean that we can't put over a Ramada, we didn't have to all, we don't have to do two turf areas, it could be one smaller area for turf and then the other areas could be more Ramadas where people can sit with benches and possibly even some tables for them to relax between games and still have the desert landscaping around them more integrated than a regular Ramada. Because I think that's the goal of this space is not just, hey, this isn't gonna be a regular Ramada that we generally have in a park, which are well and good and that we should continue with those and their different things, but this is more about beautifying the area and from Penal Avenue as well as being a little bit useful to be able to still use, given the opportunity.
Right, okay. Okay, any other questions?
Something like this one on the left-hand side, the intention is let people get out there, I think you even mentioned putting up their own shade. I just, I like it, but I wouldn't wanna see it with a keep off the grass sign. But as long as they're allowed to use it, I like that one the best.
It is, I like it too.
Anything that we did put out there would have connections to the sidewalks and the trail, so that'd be kind of the idea is have a staging area to say, hey, I can relax here in the shade as well as sit around, but hey, I actually have access to that trail that eventually in the future, we can connect to the south to the Santa Cruz Wash and go to different directions. So this would be a staging point for people to be able to do that regardless of what design we.
And I do like the shape because of course, we know we need fields space, but if this was rectangular or square, like if it was just one big space, someone might think that that could be used for field space, or that's really not the intent, right?
No, but one advisory board member did indicate that, that it could be some space where some people, you know, some soccer teams or some teams can throw around a little bit, relax a little bit more, so they did, they did throw, one person did throw that option out there, that that would be another opportunity for us to throw some grass out there and some teams can do some basic practice. They can't do a whole lot, it's not big enough to really do that much, especially with cars parking right there and the ball going over into the driveway and the kids running into the driveway, so it's not really the best place to have an actual field because of that. The proximity to cars is the bigger issue. But it doesn't mean you can't have some grass areas where they can play catch or kick the ball around a little bit at least, so.
To that point, but maybe small fields like, we have some real small soccer players, like young, might be a good little practice. I mean, just for, you know, because we're always looking for practice areas during the week, but.
And we would do that closer to the dog parks, away from the traffic a little bit. If we decided to do this, it would, we'd wanna stay away from the actual entrance area, that would probably be where the shade structures would be. That would probably be where the shade structures would be. And then the, the turf area would be a little bit further over there, so.
But I, I really like, you kept mentioning incorporating art into this and we can make art into like the history part if we wanted. And then also I'd like to see, you know, work with the tourism part, so we could have like, they were talking about having a QR code, so it's like, hey, what's going on this week in Casa Grande? Where can we eat? You know, we got people coming from other places to go to, you know, a tournament here. It's like, oh, we want to go grab a bite to eat, hit that QR code, send them somewhere in town, you know, or send them to the website. And then the other, if the next slide, I think, with the sh- no, the shade sales, yeah.
This one?
I really like the one on the left. If we can, you know, I think you get a lot of bang for your, in my mind, you get a lot of bang for your buck. I could be totally wrong because I'm not in your business, you know? But I would definitely not make them tan and white. I think I'd make them a lot more fun colors to attract attention to the area.
You're saying to use this as a shade structure possibly from there?
And then if we, you know, you mentioned, I mean, I'm gonna go crazy here, but maybe like put a little splash pad under there, you know, or something? Just saying. You're asking for ideas.
There we go. Hey, the other splash pad is busy all the time, so.
It, it could be a little water fountain. It doesn't have to be a complete splash pad.
I mean, just, just like, just the little holes that, you know, just the kids can run through like at the mood, like they have at the theaters and stuff, so.
Yeah, I just, can you go back like, I think it's three slides, kind of to Matt's point? You know, if you have these trails kind of wandering through this area.
This one or?
No, go, go back a few more. Here, oh, that was it.
This one?
And then have some of these kind of monuments artwork along the side of the trail where you can kind of follow the trail and kind of get some history and information on the area, I think would be kind of a good look. Then to have the, some Ramadas just along that trail and-
Yeah, some of the advisory boards members had mentioned that, you know, because people are coming to the memorial that they can step over, learn a little bit more about your idea of, of, of reading about Casa Grande and what's going on here, the history. And then the idea, that's a good idea of getting them to go to a restaurant as well.
How long is the trail, the total, you know, what the distance is?
Are we gonna do that?
I'm sorry?
Are we gonna talk about the trail still?
That wasn't in here, but I, we can discuss it a little bit more. It's about three quarters of a mile. It's not, it's not a full, it's not as long as the Rotary Trail that goes over there. It's, it's much shorter. Well, not much shorter, but it is shorter because it goes from the dog park all the way through. But if there's ideas you have, because our idea was to have a riprap trail, it's gonna look very similar to what that current trail is at Rotary. And putting lights and benches along the way for the next phase of that, that'll be different funds. We can utilize some of the, the trail funds for that, for that particular area. Because it winds through the trees, it gives, it's gonna give it a natural look because a lot of people, if they look at it, they just assume it's gonna be right next to the fence. Yes, certain parts of it will, over by the dog park and over by the fire station, but along that hallway, it's gonna be a nice little walk through those trees. And we already have drip to those, so that's not gonna be an issue with us being able to plant some different shrubs and natural things along that way. And then, of course, the last thing would be to put in some, some rock or different, different decoration, decorative rock out of there. We pretty much want to complete most of this before we do that, that final phase, based on what we decide to put in there. But some, some lighting as well, so people can go there either at night and it's well lit. It's gonna, I think that's part of the purpose is not just during the day where it looks like, where you can see it from the street that, hey, the lights are on with, with the new musco lighting that we put in last year, that only lights up the fields themselves. So the, the area right now is fairly dark. So with this new lighting systems we can put in, it'll look really nice and well lit. It's kind of the idea of it looking nice along that whole mile. That's the kind of idea we had for the trail is really keep it focused trail use, but also looking nice as well. And focus the money on the, the shade structures and that's 2.3 acres.
Just for clarification, the lighting, is, is the lighting gonna be ground lighting going up to the trees or is it gonna be like lamps like hanging down?
We talked about lamps so people can see the trail itself and continue walking them, but that's not a bad idea because we've talked about that at other parks to light up the actual trees to really give it some, some lighting.
Yeah, cause I mean, there was, you know, the, the light is gonna come back down too. It reflects off the trees, it might be.
That's a good idea.
I'm not gonna talk too long. I'm just gonna reiterate a couple of things I had on my notes was, is shade. I mean, yeah, shade's a premium in Arizona, so definitely lots of shade. And on the artwork, I, I like what you said about it. It needs to reflect the, the city of Casa Grande, the history of Casa Grande, not just, you know, the Arizona or the desert or whatever. I like the idea of it reflecting Casa Grande, all our history, yeah.
I think that's been a common theme is focus on Casa Grande if possible.
If possible, yeah.
Right. And I think it's possible. It's not possible if you decide not to do it.
It's possible.
And since it's named Ed Hooper Park, there should be something that tells us Ed Hooper and, you know, the history and all that there too, so.
And I think a lot of people new to the area get confused about Paul Mason, which is the Paul Mason and which one's Ed Hooper. So the whole thing is Ed Hooper and just the fields are Paul Mason, so. So anyway, just reiterating that to everybody here that doesn't know.
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
I love the trail, you know, I, I love the trails in, in the city. And the one at Rotary Park along Santa Cruz is great. And I just want to tell people, I know it seems like we're just doing a piece here and a piece there because we are right now, but we do it where we have the money and where we have the land right now. And there is a master plan that they are all gonna connect at some point, but we have to start somewhere. And so that's why we're starting in these places where they're usable now. And then eventually we're gonna have a huge loop and we have that plan somewhere online if you ever want to look at it. But i- if it seems random, it's not random. It is planned, but we do it where we own the land already and where we, we can take the lower hanging fruit at this time and get some, some stuff built so we're not waiting so many years to build a, a big trail. So I, I applaud you Danny for that and thank you in your department because I, you know, like I said, it's better to have some than none and, and then people start using them more and then we'll see how, how it goes and what else we need to do, so. But there is a big plan. We're not just building a mile here and a mile there. Eventually, it's gonna be continuous, contiguous.
And I think this trail here will complement the, being able to park there.
For sure.
If you're not a long walk, if you don't need miles and miles, this is a nice, nice walk through that area. And I've also looked at other cities, cities like Atlanta have a big, they call it the Belt, I believe it's the Belt. And that's not completed yet. It's taken them time to get it. I, I've walked it before. I've walked the whole thing and it still has huge gaps on it. It has signs about funding, blah, 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 do things. I think Cave Creek has a system that took them 20 years to get to that point. Part of what they did is they put a mile here. Then another couple of years, they put another mile here. So it does take time, so thanks for bringing that up. It, it's, it's not a simple, simple process.
Yeah, thank you. Erika, did you have something?
No, I just, I think it's all great. I like the idea of the desert landscaping. I like the idea of a splash pad, but maybe making it a fountain so that it fits a little bit more with like the area and the desert landscaping and like the artwork. So it's not so, it's not as maybe like colorful as the one that we have downtown, but maybe one that's more artistic, the way it looks. I, I like that idea.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Well, we're excited, so why don't you tell us a little bit about the timeline? What's next?
The timeline is first to get to directions. Now, it depends on how fast we want to go. If we want to go fast, I know there's builders right now that would be ready to go. They have things in place like jocks that, that can take, take it there soon. If we piece it together, it's gonna take a little bit more time. So I think we, we do need to get some design things done for, for the, the purple area. That's gonna take a little bit of design, so hopefully by late spring, we can have some progress on this particular project because it's gonna take a little bit of time to get the design. It won't take that long because I think if, I'll be honest, we spend a little bit money right now, it could be done a lot faster. So I guess it's a question, do we want it done quicker than, if we want to get it quicker? It'll cost a little bit more.
What are you doing next weekend?
Yeah, really. Do you want us all out with our shovels?
We'll be there.
No, it, really. I mean, we, we don't want to hold up anything, you know? So if there's something that you need from us, but it, hopefully, you know, we all gave our input and direction and, and of course, we support what the advisory board, you know, what their recommendations are going to be, but there's no reason to just kind of keep kicking it down the road. We're excited. You know, we allocated the funds to this, so we want to get moving. Looks like everyone wants to move, so.
Right, and that, and that's our plan. Get the direction, get a direction, figure out how we're, who's gonna get it built and then go from there and get that design done as quick as possible and then get started as soon as we can, especially with the trail going in and possibly even the, the entrance way can be a priority along with the fence can be the priority to start off with, so it, so you can see that happening and then this, and then the, the 2.3 acres would be part of that.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, Danny. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Danny.
That's good.
Okay, next, we have a presentation on the roundabout and that's Natalie and Clark are presenting, not Kevin. So welcome. Thank you guys for being here.
Sound ready?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Natalie Stevens. I'm in engineering tech at Public Works and I'm joined by Clark Klatenoff, the City Traffic Engineer. And the purpose of today's presentation is to discuss the intersection improvements at Cottonwood Lane and Mission Parkway. And with that, I'll hand it over to Clark.
Thank you. So we have an intersection that has now reached traffic volume where improvements are needed in order to safely accommodate the movement of, of traffic. We have looked at a couple of different alternatives. We have reached a point where we are confident that we are beyond being able to do an always stop situation. We do need to plan for a traffic signal or a roundabout in order to properly manage the volume and speeds of traffic that we have out there today.
Clark, can you put your, oh, sorry, your microphone up a little bit so we can, yeah, closer to you, maybe up, there you go, so we can hear you a little bit better.
Is that better?
Yep, that's better. Thank you.
I can even hear it better. Thank, okay.
We got it, but yeah.
So the current issues that we have along Cottonwood Lane, we have done some radar detection. We do have speeds out there that are higher than we would like to see them. And also along Mission Parkway, at peak periods and holidays, we are experiencing excessive delays, Mission Parkway, in order to turn onto Cottonwood Lane. So as a consequence of that, we are seeing some unsafe maneuvers that we'd like to manage along Cottonwood Lane. When you have vehicles slowing down to turn right, we have people passing on the left, which is the westbound lane, not very comfortable with that maneuver. And then when the delays get too long on Mission Parkway, they're beginning to take aggressive moves to turn onto Cottonwood Lane. So with that, we have two potential solutions. We have your traffic signal, very familiar with that, and we do have a few roundabouts in town. That's another one that we would like to discuss for your consideration. Traffic signal, of course, is, is the most familiar and will relieve Mission Parkway queuing and delay by breaking the traffic with the stop condition on Cottonwood Lane. The cons, the things that we are concerned about this is really the, there are elements of safety on the rural fringe areas to a community. People are accelerating, they're going out into the rural environment. We, we do see on other areas of town speeding that's excessive to beat a, a turn or a light. We're also getting people who are ignoring the lights during the non-peak period, they'll get a red light, they don't see anybody, and so they will just continue to travel through red lights. Passing maneuvers at the turn lanes and, and there's also a maintenance and cost involved because we do have an electronic cabinet out there and then the lights themselves. So there is a bit of a maintenance cost on an annual basis in order to maintain the traffic signal. With regard to the roundabout, it's really, for a roundabout, there's a big advantage from a traffic engineer's perspective is the safety of them. You're forcing traffic to slow down and you're eliminating the most dangerous action, which is your right angle accident. You have a traffic pulling out in a perpendicular strike that is usually a severe entry or a fatal type accident. Roundabout removes that particular movement from the equation and it also forces everyone to slow down. It doesn't necessarily reduce the number of accidents, but they're usually minor in nature as compared to the severe accident or severe fatality or, fatality or severe entry accident. It's also from a traffic operations, and when I say operations, to put it into terms that, that I like to share is, is delay. How long do you have to wait to get into the intersection? Or how long does it take you on average to get through the intersection day to day? The roundabout will allow you to travel through that intersection in less time on a routine basis, so it's going to perform better that way. It's also more consistent with the surrounding roadways, particularly as we look to the west, we have a two-lane bridge over I-10. And there's no plans in the future to change that bridge. We have a lot of other needs that are more of a priority, so a roundabout is more compatible with that. Lastly, a roundabout also will allow us to carry 20 to 30% more traffic on that two-lane roadway. And the reason for that is oftentimes, think of McCarthy, McCartney at Treckle. We went ahead and installed in the signal and that worked for a little while, but now the queues are backing up again, so we went ahead and added a left turn lane. And again, that helped, but now we still have queues. So the demand, the next thing to do is to add that second westbound lane in order to allow more vehicles to queue up at the red light and to get through a lot of amount of green time. So that's really where the progression and the requirement for the number of the lanes occurs is at the signals, because you're developing that platoon of traffic that needs to get through the signal in a certain amount of time so that the overall delay is reasonable and acceptable to everyone. So the cons to a roundabout is familiarity. You know, people are, are not, don't like change and for many people, they just aren't, they never get used to them and I understand that. And then there's also a need to accommodate all sorts of vehicles other than your common cars, trucks and smaller vehicles. So that has, as long as it's considered as you're doing your design, those particularly large vehicles can be accommodated in the design. And we have a little demonstration for you. If it's going to cooperate. There we go.
So as you can see on the bottom right corner of your screen, the traffic signal option shows traffic flow on the lower end of the efficiency scale with a higher rate of severe injury crashes. And then in contrast, the roundabout option demonstrates improved traffic flow and a much lower rate of severe injury crashes. And then construction costs and maintenance costs are slightly lower with the roundabout. And then here's some examples of existing roundabouts we have in Casa Grande. We have the intersection of Casa Grande Avenue and Jimmy Kerr Boulevard, Arizona and O'Neil Drive, and then there's a couple of roundabouts at Potabom. And then we have an example of a rural area roundabout, which features a large equipment navigating through the roundabout.
And as you're looking at, one of the things you'll see on the left is, is an apron. You can see the concrete apron that's mountable. That's a key feature in the design is to make sure that, that you're accommodating your larger vehicles by use of the appropriately designed apron. This one's a little bit restrictive in the size of the apron. This one's a little bit restrictive in the size of the apron. It clearly wasn't designed for the size of vehicles that we want the design for in this particular case. We want it designed for a full-size semi-vehicle and then get to know that our agricultural vehicles so that we make sure and accommodate them. Going to close, we've had a consultant that has gone ahead and took a few hours to put together an example of a roundabout. You'll see in the grayish-blue in the center there is the apron, that's the mountable area for trucks, a large semi that's turning. You'll see the yellow lines that are crossing over there. That's where the rear wheels of the trailer would cross over that apron in the center of the circle. And also, you'll see on the corners, let's say the lower right corner, you'll see some, a little bit of blue there. Again, there's an apron there. The curb line, the initial curb line will steer common vehicles like trucks, cars, even small semis, buses. But the apron is there to accommodate the very large vehicles. So, with that, we invite your questions.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Yeah, I got a few.
John, okay, go for it, Sean.
I'm sorry, I'm just going to not be blunt about this. I do not like roundabouts at all. I just dislike them with a passion. But I'm going to be fair to the idea because I have seen them work in different situations. But my concern is, why don't we just put in the additional turn lanes in right there as opposed to using the entire footprint for a roundabout, put the turn lanes in right there? At least with the future expansion, as the Casa Grande continues to expand on that side of the freeway, now we'll have the option to go back and put stoplights in in the future when we are getting that huge. Maybe it turns into a four-way stop someday or something, you know, and we're always going to have that roundabout because we're not going to rip that out once it's in. So, what would be, what would be the, first of all, what's the footprint on a roundabout as opposed to adding turn lanes and just leaving it a three-way stop if we want to go on the cheap with them?
We're already at a point, even with adding turn lanes, we're still at a point where the signal warrant analysis suggests that we need a signal. A three-way stop will not provide the level of service. So, we're in a realm where we need a roundabout or traffic signal. If we go ahead and were to incorporate the turn lanes that you're suggesting and put in a traffic signal, it could be widened, it would probably be some level of reconstruction in order to further enhance or build out or widen a traffic signal. A roundabout that we would be talking about could also be replaced if in the future the decision is made to go ahead and go that direction. They can be torn out, there may be some additional cost to doing that, but it would relatively be nominal. The bigger cost is going to be in changing the traffic signals. So, right now, set a full traffic signal system on a major street is running us about 600,000. You know, that's, and they're getting more expensive fast, quickly because of the cost of the steel and the chips and so forth. Those are the quickly escalating costs. So, your point is valid. Certainly don't want to say that it's not, but it's not the huge disparity you might think it is.
Okay. Yeah, and I was also talking to some local landowners that are right there and they're concerned about their easements and how much property they're going to use if we do build a big roundabout right there, big enough for farm equipment and tractor-trailers to get around that thing. I mean, how much of an easement, how much of their property are they going to lose on those corners because of the additional roundabout?
Yeah, the difference ultimately is a roundabout is, has a narrower footprint on all the approaches because we can stay with the two-lane roadway. So, we can stay within the existing right-of-way, but it does have that node, which is the intersection that is a little bigger footprint. So, we'd probably need corners, you know, then 50 to 75-foot triangles in the corners there in order to accommodate it. But the way we, that one is laid out, it wouldn't need any further right-of-way to the north.
Okay. Like I said, my biggest concern is continued growth on that side of town. There's developments planning over there and that intersection is going to get to be used a lot more. And I really think we'd be better off going with turn lanes and a traffic lights as opposed to a roundabout. That's my personal opinion. Cost comparison, roundabout compared to putting in lights, slightly more expensive, you said, for lights?
They're very similar.
But we still wouldn't be able to put turn lanes in at this point, is what you're saying?
So, what, the cost estimate we did, did include turn lanes with the traffic signal. And in this particular exhibit, this one does include the eastbound to southbound right turn. It's a bypass lane in order to move through the right-turning traffic out of the way of the through traffic. So, again, that enhances safety and will improve operations, minimize delay through the intersection.
Okay.
Okay, is that where it is?
Yeah, that's my only comments, but I am opposed to a roundabout. I would not like to see a roundabout at that intersection.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Sean. Bob?
I'm going to be the other side of the coin.
Go ahead, absolutely. I heard a lot of positives to it, too, so.
I like them mainly for the safety aspect. It does slow the traffic down. We have a history of some hellacious traffic accidents, not only at this location, but at Hacienda and then down at Overfield. People fly through there and I think this would serve us well to slow the traffic down and get a better handle on it. I also like the roundabouts for the possibility or the likelihood of beautifying that location. And I think back to the one that Florence recently put in. They have a big city monument right as you're, and this is somewhat of an entryway to our city. There is an opportunity to put some kind of art decoration, whatever, with the roundabouts that you kind of lose with a typical four-way traffic signal intersection. So, I like it. I do have a couple of questions. Do we have any idea of what may transpire as far as development to the north of here? Will there, is there any development that's set for north of this?
Mayor Fitzgibbons, Councilmember Huddleston, my understanding is that this property is owned by a larger property owner and ultimately has plans, but nothing that we're aware of that's inherent.
Okay. To address your question, we would go ahead, roundabout, we would plan, the design would include the purple and gray design through initial phases. In our world, it's called like 30% design, 60% design. Those are design semitals for us. The initial concept would be developed as a four-leg roundabout. And then we would go ahead and drop that element so that in the future, if it were to be needed, it could be added without altering the rest of the, minimizing the impact to the existing, is the best way of saying it.
Anyway, I'm a yes on the roundabout. I like them.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, Brett?
All right, I'll split the difference. I do agree with roundabouts. I think they're a good idea. I've been lots of places where they work really well. The differences and one of your cons to it was the reason, familiarity with it. People around here are not familiar with roundabouts. It's not that they don't like them, they don't know how to use them. And that causes issues. I know we have a couple in town, but I don't think that's, I don't think they're in areas where people are really becoming familiar with them. This location is where I would vary from Bob and have to go with Sean. I'm not sure if this is the right location for one right now until we get people familiar, more familiar with them and learn how to use them correctly. And my other concern is the large farm equipment that would have to go through this area as well. Because, did you say you had the farm equipment modeled with this particular size?
Once we know the vehicles that we need to pass through there, we can go ahead and model them.
Okay, so it may actually get bigger than what you're showing here.
I don't think, I don't think so. Because, the reason I say that is because when you look at a semi-turn in the length, that rear set of wheels on the trailer are the ones that control the footprint that's required. I know, I grew up on a farm, I operated farm equipment until I was about 20 years old, combines, you know, so I'm pretty familiar with the way they operate. But I know there are new pieces of equipment and I'm not familiar with this community's particular needs. So, we need to get that information and model it.
I used to pull a hay rake and, yeah, they take a lot more room then. They're offset a little bit. But, yeah, I mean, that would be kind of my concern here, but really, it's familiarity with it. And I don't know if this high of an intersection is a good spot to try and teach Casa Grande how to use roundabouts.
Yes, sir.
That's my main concern, is this may not be the appropriate place to get, to feel familiar with it. I like the idea, just not sure if this is the right spot for it. That's, that's all.
Man.
I'm going to take a different tack. You didn't mention, I've been out to Florence Anthem area, Santan area, and they have, I would call them temporary stoplights. And I don't, I would imagine they're a lot less expensive to get something going. I don't know if you guys have modeled that or saw anything about that to kind of look that way. Because I'm looking at this purple line on this where you have the proposed right-of-way, which would we have to get that for the roundabout? Because that's a lot of production agriculture land and also irrigation ditches on the, on the west, north side and right here on the west side as well, which, if that was my production ag land, I wouldn't be very happy about you taking that infrastructure out and also my livelihood as well as the trees on the east side of that, south and east sides right there, west, south of the road. You know what I'm talking about, you know? And is that what we would have to do to build a roundabout there, is acquire that right-of-way?
The, that's, I apologize, that is a misnomer. The designer showed what ultimate footprint for the corridor would be and left it on that drawing. In order to build this roundabout, we would not need right-of-way north of the existing kind of irrigation ditches. We could leave those in place. That's the intent of the way this one is designed, is to leave that in place. And again, we would not take right-of-way where it was not needed. So, basically, within the limits that you're looking there, as I had suggested earlier, a triangle from the existing right-of-way in the 50 to 75-foot would suffice in order to fit the southeast and southwest quadrants from the current lines. The footprint you see there is, as Councilman Dugan pointed out, what happens if we ever need to enhance it and go to four-lanes?
Ultimate build-out then.
That would be an ultimate right-of-way footprint, yes, sir.
And we'd have to see how wide the combines are these days because they're.
Monsters.
They're not getting smaller.
Yeah, exactly. None of that equipment is getting smaller. But I'd like to know more about the, I would call them temporary stoplights. I'm not totally opposed to a roundabout, I just would like to see that option because we do have a lot of concerns about roundabout. How is the one working at Jimmy Kerr in Casa Grande Avenue?
Jimmy Kerr, I mean, I'm going to start by suggesting that's, that's a very early version of a roundabout or a late version of a traffic circle. There are about eight to 10 different design elements that go into a roundabout as it's currently done. That particular location lacks most of those design elements. So, I would suggest that it's, it's, wouldn't be something that we would show you today in terms of the features that it has, in terms of pace at which you can go through, but managing that pace. Today's modern roundabout is more emphasis on managing the entry speeds with five or six particular key elements to it and the pace at which you can depart from the roundabout. And they're complementary. Let's just take a look at the upper left-hand corner there. You can see, if you're heading to the southeast out of that roundabout, you have to continue in the circle longer than you should. Once you, once you get halfway around that circle, you should be able to accelerate out of the roundabout faster. And that just leaves room for the entry to be better managed. Gets, I'm sorry, I don't mean to get too technical, but that's at best a fair example of what a modern roundabout looks like.
I know that a lot of, I know that Wickenburg has some big ones in it. I've been through there years ago when they were first newer. Sedona has way too many small ones. You know, it might be a solution for, you know, I'm not a traffic engineer, you guys are. So, you know, we put some weight, a lot of weight into what you guys say. The one thing that, obviously, the biggest point to me is, number one, the safety, and then also the impediment of traffic, the speed, you know, is slower for the, for the stoplight. But, I mean, I think it's somewhere we're going to have to really look at and talk to people about once we, now that this is out in the public and see what, see what the city, what the people think, you know? I mean, it, we can learn to do it, but I personally have been stuck in a roundabout in Glendale, embarrassingly enough, one time because I didn't know how to use it. I had to go around a couple times.
Just went around the circle?
Yeah. And they were going fast and I was trying to get over. I mean, I'm dead serious. It was like, it was stressful.
Because you're not, you.
Because I don't know how to use it.
I think that's what Councilman Beddelen was talking about.
I mean, I literally experienced that. I didn't know how to use it properly, which seems funny, but.
Read the site.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
So, but they were going fast, you know, they were used to it. And I, I was not. So, I mean, just interested to learn more about it. I'm glad you guys brought this tonight, but it's not, not something we're deciding tonight, but I want to hear, you know, Sean has a good constituency out there in that area that is concerned about it. And I've heard from people who are, man, this is a great place for it, you know, this is a place we should do it. And then, because, I mean, it is a three-way right now, and I think to Larry's point, it's going to be a three-way for, for a while probably, right? I mean, we don't know, but.
I guess I need to understand your definition of a three-way.
I mean, the north, the road going north.
Yeah, the, well, yeah, ultimately, to.
Right here, where it goes north, Larry, where there's no road.
And I was thinking about the stop signs, actually, right, all three areas there.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, no, actually, from us, from, we understand to Mr. Klatonoff's point that this particular intersection is beginning to, to reach the warrants, right? We need to do something at this particular intersection. It's why we asked the council to allocate money into the fiscal year budget. Obviously, from a technical perspective, the staff is, believes that this would be a ideal location for a roundabout. We recognize as a, as a city that this is a, as a staff, that this is a policy decision that the Mayor and Council will need to make. Because this is new to us from a transportation infrastructure perspective, we thought we would bring the topic to the Mayor and Council and kind of get your, get your thoughts tonight. The last thing we want to do is, is go through an entire project and bring it to council for a contract and ultimately it not meet the expectation. But, and our, at least from my perspective, our goal, our goal this evening was to actually provide more information related to roundabouts and to compare those to the traffic signal aspects of it. We've heard, at least I've heard, a couple of other alternatives, a three-way stop, right widening the lanes. We've heard temporary traffic signals. I don't know if Clark wants to speak on that. My understanding of the, of the temporary traffic signals, just as an aside, is that the county has used them in a, in their urbanized settings. I don't know that it's been anything. We have used temporary once or twice along the way, but there's a, they do become problematic to us in the overall approach to solving the issue. And so, we'd have to study that a little bit more. But, but ultimately, we know we need to make some improvements at this intersection and that's what's driving the dialogue this evening.
Do you have a question? Are there a lot of accidents in the roundabouts that we have right now? Like, are there a lot of accidents that are being reported?
I can't address that question.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, Councilwoman Romo, I don't have that specific information with us tonight. We certainly can do some research on that and provide the information of the data back to the Mayor and Council. To my knowledge, there, we haven't had many, but I, but I really don't want to speculate. Let us, let us get that information.
Yeah, I think that would be good to know, just because we have them and we use them. And what does that look like there? I've not ever been stuck in a roundabout, but I've been terrified that I could. I've not ever been stuck in a roundabout, but I've been terrified that I could potentially, but I'm, it could happen. I've seen a movie that that happened, European Vacation, so. But I'm with Bob also. I feel like it is a lot safer. And, you know, when I see, when I think about a light there, I see a lot of people running light with that potential. So again, I don't know what the right answer is, but I'm just curious, like, what does that look like in the roundabouts that we have? And what information you can give for that?
I got one more, Mayor Fitzgibbons. I got one more. Speaking on Councilwoman Romo, numbers on wrecks, that would be a good thing to get from like the cities that already have those roundabouts established. Wickenburg, Cottonwood, I was talking to my brother-in-law over the weekend, and he said one thing, he goes, people, like you said, they don't understand them, they don't know how to use them. A lot of them are big truck drivers. And, you know, he's a tow truck driver, and he tells me, he goes, trucks overturn all the time on those roundabouts because they just take them too fast, and they end up spilling over, and it's a nightmare. No traffic can get through there until the tow trucks can pull those trucks back up. So it'd be interesting to see some traffic, what's happening in real time in Wickenburg, Cottonwood, some of these other big cities that have, Sedona, you know, that have these roundabouts. It'd be interesting facts.
Could we also find out what the average, like, traffic looks like there? How many trucks are on that road?
Yeah.
How many, you know, like, tractors, are they used for that that much? Because I'm trying to think every time I'm leaving the mall, how often I see a trailer, tractor-trailer. I don't see that very often, so I'm just wondering how much. Early in the morning.
They're running early in the mornings.
Early in the morning, okay, all right.
The mall's not open.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
I would say, I agree with Bob as well and Councilwoman Romo in regards to, I believe the purpose in the roundabout that we're talking about is for safety, to slow the drivers down that's coming on Cottonwood, whether they're going east or west. And so it is slowed down, but I also have a concern for the big, the big tractors that are wide loads that are out there. And so that it's wide enough that they can make that turn. I know we had, you had one that was on there, but that's a little bit smaller one. I think there's some bigger units out there that that's all at the farm, it's right there. It's a little bit bigger unit, and it may, needs to be bigger, I think. But I think ultimate purpose of it is to slow that traffic down. And also with the light, I know that's going to be time-consuming, and cars are going to be backing up still, but with this, they can ease their way on and really slow that traffic down, too. In the same token, I think that's what we're alluding to. And so I'm for it in that area.
I'm also curious how much more land is needed for the roundabout in comparison to having a turn lane put into that road as well? Because we're still going to be expanding that road. So what is that going to look like in comparison?
Yeah, it'd be good.
So it looks like there's a lot of questions still. As far as me, I'm really where everyone is here, you know? Love the idea of it, the concept, you know, is this the right location? I'm not sure. You know, I think Florence, the city of Florence would be good, Larry. Maybe we can reach out to them to see, you know, because there isn't that busy intersection, right, coming into Florence, the city of Florence. So I think it could be helpful to understand what they went through, some of the pushback they got. You know, maybe we put like something on our website that shows the, your, what do you, simulations and maybe get input, feedback, you know, from people to see. But, you know, you hate to just put a survey out there because people don't know, understand everything, you know, how a roundabout works. So I don't really think a survey is going to really help. But, you know, but maybe there's a way to, you know, get some input, because this is a very busy area. You know, the first thing is, we know this needs to be done. So, and we can't be dragging our feet. We can't be waiting another six months to get input and all this to move on this. This is something that has to be done. That intersection is really, really busy when you are going out to the mall and there's a lot of traffic. You know, I love your idea as far as it kind of upgrades and beautifies that area, you know? The roundabout in the center area, you could be, have so much, you know, art or whatever it is, monument in the middle, but I worry that it is a little bit more rural and, you know, not during the busy daytime. And, you know, when people are coming down that road, you know, is it lit up? You know, do people not know a roundabout's there? I don't, I, I'm not sure how that is when it's in a little bit more rural area, especially early mornings and late nights. So would like more data or information on that. So I think that, you know, if you can just maybe provide some of the questions, you heard some of the questions that people have, and maybe we can get some of that and hopefully come back soon so we can, you know, try to, try to move forward on which route we're going to go.
I was just going to bring up our winter visitors, you know, when they, our Casa Grande might get used to it pretty quick, but winter visitors come in here and everything's going to start colliding in that roundabout.
Yeah, but you know, winter visitors come from cities where roundabouts, they're all over. I mean, Europe, they're all over the place.
Yeah, we're America.
Yeah, I know, I know, but they, but they are, they are, they are in a lot of cities. They are in a lot of cities, you know? So obviously the, so, but I understand your point, Sean. No, and it does concern me, you know, especially again, more rural, what kind of traffic is coming in there? Is it, is it lit up enough, you know? Is this the ideal place for this particular, but the safety, the traffic flow and everything, it makes sense. I mean, you guys are the traffic engineers, you know. You know, you know. We really don't know. They do the traffic studies. But the rural piece and the type of equipment, you know, the trucks and stuff that are coming through is what I would like to know more about, so.
We'd certainly be glad to address all your questions, and I'll close with a comment that in our assessment of either alternative, we would want to make sure that it's lit so that, you know, again, it's safety.
Right.
Regardless of whether at your direction we proceed with the signal or the roundabout, we would want to see it lit.
Right, right, okay. Okay, so did you get enough feedback from us? Anything, any other questions then? Okay. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close this study session and start the regular council meeting at 7:00. So we'll break for a few minutes. Thank you again.
I see, I'll be in Ocean Side.